Thank you. So it's two minutes, but seven. Thank you, everybody, for being here and welcome to the public hearing to the county's fiscal year 2026 proposed operating budget. I'm Takis Karantonis. I'm the board chair, and I'm joined by my colleagues, board members Maureen Coffey, vice-chair Matt Feranti, board member Susan Cunningham, and Julius J.D., Spain senior. Before we begin, I would like to address a few logistical items related to our, you know, obviously unusual and new venue for this meeting. Due to the flooding, maybe you have read the news, the flooding of the Bozeman Government Center where we usually meet, we are holding this meeting tonight at the Central Library here, and we would like to offer our thanks to the libraries for accommodating us in a very short notice. I will ask you, just for the general flow of the meeting, to use the American Sign Language applause works as well. So if you, so for those, just a second, yeah. So thanks to libraries and accommodating us of a short notice, and also thank you all members of our community for adjusting to this unexpended change of venue. For those joining in person tonight, the exterior doors of the Central Library will lock at 8:00 P.M. You will be able to exit the building after that time, but you will not be able to reenter. So a member of our staff will be out there and onsite and will be available to assist you if you need to leave and reenter for any reason. If you drove here this evening, parking permits are available through our staff if needed. If you are parked in the Central Library garage downstairs, the doors are scheduled to close at the conclusion of this meeting, of this hearing, no later than 10:30 P.M. If your vehicle is still in the library garage after 10:30, you will not be able to exit until tomorrow morning. So please do not leave your vehicle if you have plans in the area after this evening's hearing. I very much expect we will be done by then. So finally, we recognize that this change of venue has occurred on a very short notice, and therefore, we will be accommodating any late-in-person speaker registrations. Online advance sign up is closed at this time, and now we can proceed with the public hearing. As you know, or most of you know, over the past several weeks, the board has held work sessions, even today, a little bit earlier, to discuss budget recommendations with various county agencies and departments. We also heard from many of our advisory commissions. Our role this evening is, this evening is to hear from you, the residents of Arlington County, on our community needs, on the programs and services which are most important to you. We will hold a second and separate public hearing on the proposed tax rates and various fee and code amendments this Thursday, March 27th, at 7:00 P.M. here in this auditorium. The online sign up for Thursday's hearing on the tax rate exclusively and the fees is available on the county board's website or by calling the county board office, 703-228-3130. And that's always weekdays from 8:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. The board will act on the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating budget and the calendar year 2025 tax rates and associated fees and code amendments at the April 9th board meeting. So before we begin with public testimony, I believe that county manager, Mr. Schwartz, or our leaders of the Department of Management Finance, Mr. Stevenson, have a presentation.
Yes, I'm going to ask.
Oh, I cannot, I cannot see you, Mr. Managers.
Mr. Stevenson has a brief presentation, brief, I promise you.
Okay. The floor is yours, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Chair Karantonis. I won't walk through our over 1,000-page proposed budget here this evening, but I do want to spend just a minute or two on the, this summary infographic and hit a couple of the highlights in the, in the budget that the managers proposed this year and that will hear testimony on tonight and Thursday night. So in summary, the manager's proposed budget totals almost $1.7 billion in the general fund operations, as well as a number of other funds. For the general fund, this is a 2.2% increase from the adopted FY 2025 budget. The budget includes, the budget includes continued growth in most revenue sources, including 2% growth in real estate assessments from this past January, 3.6% overall tax growth in FY 26, and a number of revenue fee proposals, and one tax increase proposed. The county manager's budget leaves all other tax rates unchanged over FY 2025, with the exception of a proposal to increase the meals tax from 4% to 5%. Even with continued growth in most revenue categories and the tax and fee proposals, these revenues did not keep up with funding needs, and more than $12 million in service and program reductions are recommended. I should note that these proposals impact 45 positions across county government. On the right hand of the slide, and I appreciate it's a little difficult to see here in the room, are areas of continued investment. Significant funding continues in housing and human services, and we continue to maintain our commitments to our workforce and our largest funding category, schools. In the proposed budget, Arlington Public Schools will receive over $647 million in support from the county, which is 46.8% of all local tax revenue and a 3.6% increase in ongoing funding. Finally, with the uncertainty in the regional economic environment, the manager is recommending an increase to our stabilization reserves to allow flexibility in addressing federal funding uncertainty and continued stressors in a number of county-provided programs. At the very bottom of the screen, if you could scroll up just a little bit, if we can see the timeline of the budget process, tonight we're hearing testimony on the expenditure budget. As the chair mentioned, Thursday, we will have a public hearing on the proposed taxes and fees. Ongoing now, we are having work sessions with the county board on department budgets, and the board will conclude the process with budget adoption on April 9th. The fiscal year 26, fiscal year budget begins on July 1st, 2025, and with that, conclude the budget hearing overview and turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. So before we begin, by the way, for, for all of this, we have a web, a website, a dedicated website, and if you go to arlingtonva.us and you put budget, especially budget fiscal year 2026, you will find all the resources that documents, the presentations, everything that is relevant to this budget cycle is, is there, very easy to find. So before we begin, public testimony, we will hear a brief, we heard the brief presentation, and now I will say a few things about the speaking procedures tonight. So we are ready to hear from you, public speakers. You will be called in the order that the registrations were received, beginning with all two-minute speakers and followed by all three-minute speakers. For those in person, and there are numerous here, thank you for that, please speak directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear you. If you're submitting documents as part of your testimony, please hand them to the clerk here, Mr. Mason Kushner, with your name and contact information on all documents. For remote speakers, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you are called on to speak. You will need to unmute yourself using star six if you are on the phone, or by clicking the microphone button on the toolbar if you're using Teams on an app or a browser. Please end your comments as soon as your speaking time has elapsed. We discourage repetitious testimony. This is out of consideration for everybody so that everybody comes to speak. Feel free to associate yourself with previous remarks by standing or using the American Sign Language expression for applause. Those who are wishing to, who wish to submit written statements in lieu of oral presentations may do so at any time by emailing countyboard@arlingtonva.us. So, Mr. Clerk, please call, call the first two speakers.
Of course, one moment. Our first speaker of the evening is Jamie Cravanta, excuse me, Cravantka, followed by Claire Christian.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking to you tonight to advocate on behalf of the Arlington County Library, the crown jewel of our county system. Not only is it a free resource, but it is an invaluable asset available to every single member of our community regardless of any demographic factors. Think about it for a moment. The library is a home for unemployed workers needing job search support. It's a home for readers and lifelong learners. The library is a home for students working with tutors and our young ones at storytimes. It's a home for gardeners and board gamers and those learning to sew or to create, and it's a sanctuary for members of our community who need a safe haven. For me, the library is a place to try out new things. I read a book last year, totally outside of my preferred genres, and I loved it. It was one of my favorite books of last year, but I never would have picked it up without browsing the library shelves. And in fact, just last weekend, I got certified to operate the glow forges in the Maker Space, and just like that, a whole new world of creation opened up for me. As it stands now, this amazing county resource has the smallest budget of any department. Is this what we want for our county or for our community? A budget smaller than last year and which only covers the collection and staffing, leaving all responsibility for programming costs to the Friends group? I sure don't. On behalf of all Arlington readers, makers, leaders, explorers, teachers, students, gardeners, board gamers, and lifelong learners, I'm asking you to support this resource in line with its value to our community. Please find a way to zero out the proposed cuts for this budget cycle and increase support to this invaluable community resource now and in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Our next speaker is Claire Christian, followed by Susan Ross.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Claire Christian, and I am here tonight as the president of the board of the Friends of the Arlington Library, ARFOL. In the past year, the library held over 5,000 programs with over 1,000 in attendance. Circulation of electronic and print materials is in the millions, and the library was also available to host this meeting last minute today. The library, despite making up just 1% of the county budget, is clearly heavily used and needed by our community, and ARFOL is proud to support it, which is why I urge the board to avoid any cuts to the library budget this fiscal year. The cuts proposed by the library would particularly reduce the availability of materials that Arlington residents are using in increasing numbers. I'd like to share with you a story from one of those residents who wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately was unable to attend. She is a first-generation immigrant and a parent who has found the library to be an absolutely essential resource for her family. She told me that her six-and-a-half-year-old daughter is already a voracious reader who thinks of the library as, quote, "a place where she belongs." Her daughter already waits months to check out popular books and will wait even longer if those cuts are adopted. This resident also told me, quote, "We have a population vested in reading. Then why do we think it is okay to take the budget away? I think of the collections budget as a capital or infrastructure investment. It is a drop in the ocean when you look at the overall county budget, but with a potential to build towards the future." I couldn't agree with her more. In these challenging times, Arlington must invest in keeping its community institutions strong and thriving. I hope you will find ways to avoid cutting the library's budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, please.
Our next speaker is Susan Ross, followed by Janet Wensley.
Hello, I'm Susan Ross, and I'm here because I'm really grateful for the services that the library here has offered to me. I'm a retired Foreign Service Officer, still working part of the year overseas. And for me, with my nomadic lifestyle, the library has linked me to the Arlington community, which is important to me as a taxpayer and a property owner here. When I'm in the U.S. by providing classes on topics such as, and these I've taken recently, aging and socialization, bullet journaling, and sewing techniques. It also connects me to book groups, both online and in person, that keep me connected to other residents and also keep me informed about current issues in Arlington County. Additionally, given the somewhat nomadic nature of my lifestyle as a traveling diplomat, the library offers, when I'm here, a lot of helpful functions, such as the meeting rooms where I can have meetings and I can work, or printing facilities for which I'm very grateful. And I benefit enormously when I'm overseas from the digital collections, which I understand are the ones being targeted for cuts. Through Libby, I can access audiobooks and Kindle books, and I can access films from Canopy, which offers a higher caliber of films than you can find on Netflix or Amazon Prime. In short, for me, the library's offerings keep me current, entertained, connected, and well-informed. That's a huge function, and I would like to ask you to restore the funding to previous levels, and please do not cut the budget any further. We depend on this library for so many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Janet Wensley, followed by David Littman.
Good evening. I am a former librarian. I worked at a nonprofit membership organization for 30 years as a librarian, and I have always been very impressed by the Arlington County Public Library. It represents, provides resources that cover a wide range of topics, covering the all-range of the political spectrum, and it's, provides them in all formats. I learned that in my career that the distinction between print and e-materials is actually artificial. There are some things you can get only as an e-material, Canopy, for instance, and then there's some things that only work in print, maps, for instance. But when you start looking at a book, you have formats that serve all kinds of people. You have print for people who can read print. You have large type for people with visual difficulties. You have e-readers. People may want to carry a tablet overseas or with them on a bus. You have audiobooks for people who, for whatever reason, don't want to listen, don't want to read a book, and then they're braille. So the distinction between e-materials and print materials, to me, seems to be artificial. One thing that's impressed me about the range of resources at the library is we support voices that don't need to be commercially successful and don't need to be politically fashionable. We are living in a time where there are commercial challenges to all kinds of resources, and we're in a political scene that is dismantling the Department of Education and the Institute for Museum and Library Services. This, this area is under economic stress, and resources that had been available to us through the government may be cut. So I think that we should try to maintain the library's funding as much as possible because people in Arlington County will need the library resources more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is David Littman, followed by Milton Hess.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Manager, County Staff, I'm here along with several colleagues to advocate for including funds in the FY 26 budget to allow the Aurora Hills 55-plus center to open five days a week. Aurora Hills is the only one of the county's five 55-plus centers which is not open five days a week. In fact, Aurora Hills is only open 15 hours a week, 50% or less than every other center. This is the artifact of a long-ago budget action which no, which is no longer reflective of the nature of our community, if it ever was. Aurora Hills serves National Landing, which is a rapidly growing flagship location for the county, yet its seniors, a significant part of the demographic, are underserved compared to other parts of the county. There is no rational reason for Aurora Hills to be treated differently from the other 55-plus centers. We understand that it is a difficult budget year, but it is always a difficult budget year, and at some point, the county needs to decide that this is a priority worth funding. As I have spoken with most of you on the subject in more detail, I'm not going to reiterate all the benefits which opening Aurora Hills full-time brings to Arlington senior community and the 55-plus program, but a vibrant, healthy, physically fit 55-plus population is a critical component of a vital, diverse Arlington county. And one last thought, if you'd like to see Aurora Hills in action, then please come to our annual trash and treasure sale on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:30 to 1:00. Who knows? You may find a treasure there, something we find every day we participate in an activity at Aurora Hills. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Littman, and thank you, everybody who was with you. The next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Milton Hess, followed by Sonia Ortega.
Good evening, Chair Karantonis, and members of the board. My name is Milton Hess, and I have lived in Arlington for three years. I'm 83 years old now and almost completely dependent on the library for my reading and viewing materials. I don't watch television, and I can't go to the movies because I need subtitles to understand the dialogue. So DVDs and movies from the library are a huge deal for me. My reading materials are mostly nonfiction like cosmology and natural history, and I love that the library continues to refresh its collection with current books. Thanks to the library and the 55-plus program, the county provides a terrific environment for seniors like me. So please, continue to support these wonderful community assets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sonia Ortega, followed by Caitlin Keating-Butoni.
Good evening. I'm Sonia Ortega, and I have lived and worked in Arlington for over 30 years. My hair was black when I came. So I have used that, the library, over the years, many different services. I have borrowed books, I have borrowed films, I have participated in the speaker series, I have, I have, for me, the library is essential for my life. Now that I am retired, I have more time to read more, but I also have time to watch films. My husband and I watch a lot of films, and Canopy for us is essential. Canopy provides a wide range of films, documentaries, educational films, films from all over the world, films that are, present different alternatives for our lives. That's very important for our community, that is also very diverse, and having the different cultures and the different points of view really enrich our lives. We are away from the mainstream that other services, paid services, offer. The other, the good thing is also Canopy is free. I really, really like to maintain the budget, to support Canopy. It is very essential. The other thing that I use a lot is the books in Spanish. The Arlington has a large Hispanic community, and I really believe it's important for people who are not fluent in English. I am fluent in English, but I still like to read in Spanish, and it's very important for people. The library also offers other languages that are important for other people in our communities that would like to read in the original languages. So please, 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 I would really urge you to not cut the budget and, and increase it, you know, and not only, not, not cut it, but increase it if you can to support the library that really enrich our communities in, in Arlington. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Keating-Butoni, followed by Stephanie Dillamith. Is Ms. Keating-Butoni with us?
We may go to the next speaker, and then we come back to Ms. Butoni.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Dillamith, followed by Laura Tinter.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Arlington County Board. My name is Stephanie Dillamith, and for the past two years, I've had the great privilege of running a free mindfulness program at Courthouse Library. A few weeks ago, I wrote in my gratitude journal about the sense of hope and community I get to experience through the library. I reflect on how our wonderful Arlington libraries, plural, hold space for connection and promote peace. I thought about the individuals from all walks of life who find solace and support here, and I thought about my mindfulness group. Every week, I witness the transformative power of this library. We welcome individuals facing immense challenges, some without stable housing, carrying their belongings, seeking peace and connection. The library provides that safe space. Our program honors human dignity. We provide supplies, reading materials, and even simple comforts like snacks and tea. These small acts are made possible by the library's commitment to serving our community. The library is a place where people find not just information, but also a sense of belonging. It's where we build compassion, ease suffering, and amplify goodness. These proposed funding cuts threaten programs like ours, which nimbly offer crucial support to vulnerable and diverse populations. These cuts undermine Arlington Public Library's unique position as a beacon of hope and a center for community resilience. Reducing funding is not just about cutting budgets, it amounts to cutting people off from vital resources. It amounts to devaluing access to peace, community, and support. I urge you to consider the profound impact of these cuts, especially given how effectively the library delivers impact on an already lean budget. The library is not a luxury, it's a necessity. So please invest in Arlington Public Library and let Arlington continue to be an exemplary county that promotes community and peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Tinter, followed by Christian Honig.
Hello. My name is Laura Tinter. I use she, they pronouns, and I'm here to request that you permanently fund the Arlington Public Library's Overdrive collection. My husband and I are homeowners and business owners in Arlington going on 30 years. I'm a member of the Friends of the Arlington Public Library and an avid reader. I usually have several books open at once, a physical book, an audiobook, and a digital ebook, many of which I now borrow through the Libby app, which is one of the online lending services that is supported by Overdrive. And I'm not alone. The Overdrive collection is popular. E-books and e-audiobooks have circulated over a million times in fiscal year 2023, an increase to 1.5 million in fiscal year 2024. Growing this e-collection is driving people back to the library. I know that having access to electronic books through Libby got me re-engaged. I know that having access to electronic books through Libby got me re-engaged. I always loved reading. It keeps me informed, learning, and entertained. And when I started to move towards electronic reading a few years ago, I thought the library would be less useful to me. Then I learned that you could borrow ebooks and found that my library card worked on Libby, and I was hooked. It's all so easy and right here at my fingertips 24/7. In digital times, libraries are needed more than ever. Libraries provide diverse viewpoints and a safe space to explore them. Books provide access to voices and knowledge outside our own experience and help us develop empathy and understanding. Maintaining an extensive e-collection puts all those benefits literally in the hands of our community. Therefore, I'm asking you, the county board, to include more funding for e-materials in the library's budget and permanently fund Overdrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tinter. The next.
Our next speaker is Christian Honig, followed by Maddy Miller.
Good evening, Mrs. Honig.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christian Honig, and I would like to speak about the importance of the Arlington Library. I became an Arlington resident in May of 2023. When I moved to Courthouse, I was still struggling from a post-COVID apathy and was searching for a way to jumpstart lost passions. The Arlington County Library provided me with an avenue, and I will be forever grateful for it. Throughout high school and college, I loved learning. I specifically picked my college because it had a core curriculum that required classes in a variety of fields. My first few post-grad years involved learning new technologies at work, which in turn fueled further curiosity. Once COVID hit, everything slowed down and my life stagnated. I stopped seeking new knowledge and became comfortable with what I already had. This apathy continued until I moved to Arlington in 2023. When my fiance mentioned that she'd signed up for a library card, I accessed the website and noticed the library had a series of programming events about topics I knew almost nothing about. As I scanned the site, I realized that the library had the core curriculum that I had been missing for all these years. Since joining the library, my fiance and I have attended several of the programming events, and they've opened new worlds for us. One of the most impactful sessions included a Q&amp;A with reporters who released a series of groundbreaking stories about the abuse that took place at Indian boarding schools in America. Since this conversation, I've become far more cognizant of Native American struggles for justice. The Arlington Library has reintroduced my passion for history and literature. The sessions have inspired me to start reading as a consistent habit, following both local and national news, and getting more involved with local community events. The library is among the most critical elements of Arlington's infrastructure, and I am living proof that it can reignite a stalled individual. Budget cuts will affect the library's ability to meet the diverse range of needs and interests in the Arlington community, and I want the library to continue providing a full range of services. I'm directly asking that you do not cut funding for the library, which again is a critical piece of Arlington's infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honig.
The next speaker is Maddy Miller, followed by Nicholas Millington.
Good evening, Ms. Miller.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maddy Miller, and I've been an Arlington resident all of my life. I still remember the day that I got my first library card, and it was such a special moment for me. When I moved back a couple of years ago and became a teacher in the public schools around here, I became reintegrated with the library through the use of Libby and Canopy and those Overdrive apps that many speakers before me have mentioned. Their impact has been tremendous for me, my family, and my friends, and our ability to access library materials in all places, of all genres, and especially for me as a foreign film fan, Canopy has the materials there that you can't find on other streaming services or even in the physical DVDs that we have in the library. The budget cuts proposed to the library mean that the wait times on these materials will go way up when they are already pretty high, especially on Libby, and so I urge you to not just restore the funding to the library, but increase it. The library provides so many important services and access to educational materials and other things for the entire community, and cutting the budget will have the greatest impact on the people who are most vulnerable. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Millington, followed by Natalie Davis.
Good evening, Mrs. Millington.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. My wife, I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. My wife and I are regular community users of the library. We both take out tons of books. I'm a member of the Strange Lands Science Fiction Book Club. We're both members of the Friends of the Arlington Library, and we go to tons of the events hosted by the library, including the Women's Makers Fair just this last weekend. And just from my own experience and even hearing a lot of what people this evening are saying, there's a real, the library is a real source of community for my wife and I, and so many people get so many different things out of it, especially considering what a relatively small line item it is in the budget. It really feels to me like it punches above its weight. And yeah, I just wanted to speak out for the the kind of central place that the Central Library in particular has has for for my wife and I. It's a source of utility, of communication or communication of community, of engagement for being the smallest line item in the budget already. So I just ask the the board not to decrease its funding beyond the the current levels. And I also just want to thank the board and the county manager, because I know it's kind of a difficult decision and that sometimes the public policy is trying to find the least bad option. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. The next speaker.
Our next speaker is Natalie Davis, followed by Elizabeth Jones Valderrama.
Good evening, Ms. Davis.
Good evening. I come to you as a 35-year resident of Arlington County, the county I chose because it's a commitment to her community. I moved here before the Central Library was transformed into this modern resource center and today civic center that it is today. I come to you as a parent whose child looked forward to stories and art on the second floor of the Cherrydale branch. I come to you as a recovering lawyer and former Arlington prosecutor and soon-to-be-published author, but primarily, I come to you as a fierce supporter of our libraries, whose budget you propose to cut, and I ask you not to cut that budget. I drafted these comments on the second floor of this library, in the quiet room. The quiet room is my refuge. It's where I finished writing my first book. The library is where I found books that educated me about finding a publisher, an agent, about composing book proposals and query letters. It's where I roamed the shelves and compared book jackets, deciding what I wanted my cover to look like. It's where I dared to dream that my book would one day grace those shelves for other people to read. After dozens of submissions and countless hours at my laptop in the quiet room, I signed a publishing contract and my book, Saying Yes: My Adventures in Polyamory, will be out next year. The library is where I could easily access books in the same genre as mine. It's where I could speak frankly with staff about their catalog on books on non-monogamy. And at my suggestion, in advance of the Week of Visibility for Non-Monogamy last July, the staff developed an online book list to aid patrons in their exploration of that topic. In the acknowledgements to my book, I specifically thank Central Library and the quiet room. The library is a place where everyone is welcome and nurtured. And I was really touched by all the things that people said about how much the library meant to them. It really resonated. The library is where budding writers can become published authors.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Your time has elapsed.
I asked not to cut the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Jones Valderrama, followed by Jeremiah Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time and dedication, and for the opportunity to speak today. So I'm here to thank you on behalf of OAR of Arlington, Alexandria, and Falls Church, and I first want to start by telling you a story. I'd like to introduce you to Jay. Jay is an inspiring example of the many individuals that OAR has journeyed with as he re-entered the community after incarceration. Jay spent 10 years in prison before starting his journey with OAR. After his release, OAR provided Jay with critical emergency services and helped him secure housing. OAR also played a crucial role in helping Jay find a job. With determination, Jay secured an apprenticeship with an HVAC company, and thanks to OAR's support, we were able to provide him with work attire and boots and the necessary tools to start that job. He expressed gratitude for OAR's support and showed an interest in enrolling in night school classes for additional training. He admitted that facing the next steps alone seemed daunting due to the lack of family and support, but he was immensely grateful for OAR's guidance during the challenging process. For 50 years, OAR of Arlington, Alexandria, and Falls Church has been honored to journey with individuals of all genders and their loved ones impacted by the criminal legal system. OAR's direct service programs include alternative sentencing options like community service and diversion programs so people can avoid the trauma of incarceration and instead help the community thrive. We also do work pre and post-incarceration in reentry services for adults. OAR has pushed also for racial and economic justice to ensure a better future for all. We are grateful for 50 years of working in solidarity with you. Thank you for your unwavering support of our mission, and please continue to support us and the nonprofit sector, especially during these very challenging times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones Valderrama. For for the general public, OAR stands for Offender Aid and Restoration, which is in the, I mean, does everything that Ms. Valderrama was referring to.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeremiah Howard, followed by Sarah Barker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Arlington County has four distinguishing assets: proximity to the nation's capital, its resources and transportation nodes, excellent educational institutions up to the tertiary level, a very good hospital, and a system of network parks that are a recreational magnet for the entire region. Instead of focusing exclusively on these four distinguishing assets with a view towards husbanding and enhancing them, the board has become distracted by vain pursuit of goals that are beyond the reach of local government. Examples: During the Marathon February 22nd Board Session, I envy all of you for your stamina, board members announced their commitment to converting our oversubsidized art buses to electric vehicles as an environmental measure. At that very moment, PJM, Dominion Powers Grid Operator, reported 13% of our electricity was coming from solar and wind. You might use our tax money to buy an electric art bus fleet, but it will be running, for the most part, on coal and gas. A second example: Despite massive opposition from across the county, the board continues to to pursue its increasingly expensive Missing Middle Housing Campaign, ostensibly with the goal of providing cheaper housing options. When my parents immigrated to the United States, they had to share single-family houses with multiple households. Today, up and down our arterial roads such as Wilson Boulevard, multiple households are also sharing single-family homes. Replacing these single-family homes with million-dollar townhouses or $750,000 condos is not going to offer a rung on the economic ladder to migrant families. It will only deny them shelter. A third example: The historical marking of profoundly unremarkable garden apartments has prevented their replacement with energy-efficient, tax-generating, mixed-income housing. Let's respond to the regional housing deficit, but in a way that reduces our carbon footprint and increases county revenues. And let's abandon the quixotic ambitions of overambitious government and get back to sustainable self-management.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Barker, followed by Eleanor Schwartz.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Barker.
I'm Sarah Barker, artistic director of Arlington's Avant Barre Theater, and I'm speaking on behalf of Avant Barre, a professional nonprofit theater based in Arlington for 35 years. But my views also represent those of other Arlington performing arts and heritage arts groups, many of whom are here with us tonight. Avant Barre began performing in this county over 35 years ago as part of the original Arts Incubator program, meant to help small arts groups. But the proposed Cultural Affairs Division cost-recovery model does the opposite from the incubator. It imposes a new financial burden that would stifle our ability to serve this community. We were not consulted in any kind of timely fashion on this model, and to our knowledge, neither were other Arlington arts groups. Yet the impact on us and others is serious. Under this model, our cost to use Gunston Theater 2 for a season would rise to a level that would prevent us from returning to a three-show season, which we had before COVID. Since the pandemic, we've worked so hard just to rebuild to a two-show season, and this change would severely limit that recovery. Our recent Helen Hayes Award nominations for Coriolanus and the glowing review we just received of the Marguerite from Trey Graham in the Washington Post favorably comparing us to our tiny-budget show to a major production at one of the very large DC theater houses are signs of our momentum. This model threatens that progress. We understand the need for fiscal responsibility, but decisions like this should not be made for but with the arts community. As a constructive alternative, we ask the county to consider creating a separate grant program that the arts groups can apply to outside the general operating support program to help cover venue and staffing costs at these facilities. Please pause the implementation of this model and bring arts groups together into a real conversation. The original incubator helped create a thriving arts community in Arlington. This model risks dismantling it.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Our next speaker is Eleanor Schwartz, followed by Sherry Takamoto.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Schwartz, and I'm speaking on behalf of Nancy Hyde and myself. We were board members of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust for over 18 years, and we are gutted by the county staff's proposal to cut the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust and its two-decade productive relationship. We urge that you fully fund the $86,900 for the budget. Just 15 months ago, the county approved the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, which features the NVCT as a key partner to achieve 11 of the goals. Arlington benefits from private lands committed to conservation that the county does not have to buy or manage, and stewardship is an ongoing requirement. The trust monitors its 33 easements annually, including five fully-owned nature preserves to ensure that the conservation commitments are kept. NVCT helps manage a community garden that addresses local food insecurity, and the trust is a multiplier of the county's investment. Recently, it raised nearly $50,000 in outside grants and provided hundreds of staff hours to create a GIS mapping tool to help prioritize conservation outreach. And over the past three years, NVCT has contributed nearly 1.2 million in financial value for the county's roughly $260,000 investment. NVCT's services include storm water controls, and it protects historic resources, tree canopy, wildlife habitat, and trails. In a time of reckless federal cutbacks, Arlington can show that it still values this way to protect green space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
Our next speaker is Sherry Takamoto, followed by Mary Tugwell.
Good evening, Ms. Takamoto.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Sherry Takamoto. I'm the co-chair of the Developmental Disabilities Committee of the Community Services Board, and I'm here to thank you for your continued support. We appreciate the board as it continues to share our vision for jobs in the community. We especially want to thank Takis for his commitment to see if there might be a possible internship somewhere in the county for folks with developmental disabilities, so we can show the the business community that this model works. Over the last year, we, last year, this year and the next year, we anticipate that more folks will be moving from locally-funded services to Medicaid waiver services because we have a whole bunch of new slots coming, and we appreciate your foresight in asking for an additional service coordinator that will be primarily funded through the Medicaid waiver. And we want to thank you for your continued support. Last year, we opened the Employment Access Program to prepare young people with developmental disabilities for jobs. We have a new inclusive day program supporting people with disabilities in the community, not at the centers, and at the same time, we look forward to working with the county for at least one of the two planned the two planned satellite day programs to be in a residential mixed-use site, so we can also have some sort of café or retail along with the day program. So I just want to thank you, and we appreciate everything you're doing and your commitment to our folks with developmental disabilities here in Arlington.
Thank you, Ms. Takamoto.
Our next speaker is Mary Tugwell, followed by Anita Martineau. And then just as a very quick announcement to all of our speakers here today, the current time is 7:50. If you need to leave the building for any reason, you have 10 minutes to do it. Otherwise, we will have to have a member of our staff escort you.
Good evening, Ms. Tugwell.
Good evening. My name is Mary Tugwell, and I am the president of the Board of Meals on Wheels Arlington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Each week through Meals on Wheels Arlington, more than 60 volunteers deliver 10 meals and a smile to about 200 homebound and disabled Arlington residents. In 2024, 139 volunteers delivered 93,000 meals to 290 individual clients. For many of our clients, our volunteers are more than meal deliverers. They're friends. Sometimes, they're the only person that client may see all week. Research provided by Meals on Wheels America has shown that loneliness and isolation can be as detrimental to health as smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. And the NIH also reports that older adults who maintain a healthier diet have significantly lower risk of many conditions, including depression, heart disease, certain cancers, and dementia. Meals on Wheels has been alerted to expect a significant funding gap in the coming year, which may require us to stop serving as many as 34 of our clients, leaving them potentially hungry and alone. Please approve the $105,000 proposed in the budget so that Meals on Wheels can continue delivering nutrition and comfort to our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tugwell.
Our next speaker is Anita Martineau, followed by Stephanie Webster.
Good evening, Ms. Martineau.
Good evening. My name is Anita Martineau. I'm a 46-year resident of Arlington, a retired local government employee, and a licensed clinical social worker. I'm here to speak on the need for pay equity for the staff of the Arlington County Sheriff's Office. While the budget proposal includes an 11% pay increase for the fire department and 9% for the police, the proposed pay increase for the sheriff's office is set much lower at 3.5%. At a time when public servants are struggling with being undervalued by fellow citizens and government officials, you have an opportunity to demonstrate a counter-narrative here in Arlington, affirming the importance of these public servants who come to work 24/7 every day in the largely secluded workplace of the jail, keeping order and bringing dignity into what is the de facto largest mental health institution in Arlington. It is perhaps not widely understood that deputies serve in traumatizing jobs, enduring being spit upon, having body fluids and excrement thrown at them, and being inflicted with physical injuries. This work is very complex, and many people cannot do it or are not willing to put themselves in such jeopardy. But our professional deputies have chosen to serve the incarcerated with dignity and respect. They deserve better than 3.5% from the county. I urge you to consider that any pay increase is not just an increase in salary, it's a community investment. You've long desired for Arlington public servants to live in the county where they serve. Of the approximate 200 employees of the sheriff's office, only 19 live in Arlington. The other 181 can't afford it, and a pay increase of 3.5% isn't enough to move the needle to where we all want it to be. On this Pay Equity Day 2025, please ensure that pay equity for our deserving deputies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martineau. The next one?
Our next speaker is Stephanie Webster, followed by Victoria Wu.
Good evening, Ms. Webster.
Good evening. So the budget states that Arlington County values diversity, inclusivity, and public safety, yet the proposed budget tells a different story. Under the guise of public safety, the proposed budget increases police spending to $93.8 million. This amount is up 42% from the budgeted amount for 2017. Does this budget take into account the public safety for all Arlington residents or just some, considering that Arlington Police is allowed to collaborate with ICE to detain and deport Arlington residents? This includes Dr. Beider Khan Suri, who was unlawfully detained by ICE and stripped of his visa last Monday simply because of his advocacy for Palestinians, as those in Gaza have suffered through almost a year and a half of genocide. It's very telling that while the unjust detainment of Dr. Khan Suri may national news, Arlington County has remained silent. The proposed police budget includes funding for significant developments related to the use of drones for surveillance. In fact, the county hired 20 drone pilots in 2024 and plans for significant growth in its use of drones over the coming years. This is obviously concerning, given the rise in unlawful arrests by ICE and blatant attacks on First Amendment rights in recent months. I am also concerned about the development of these drones, as they could soon be equipped with rubber bullets and tear gas, then later armed with more dangerous weapons such as or similar to the development of military drones. This will only place further distance between police and the community at a time in the U.S. when police murders of racial minorities continue to rise to unprecedented numbers, with only 3% of police held accountable largely due to support from police unions. What the board does not consider in its definition of public safety is housing, which the budget proposed cutting by 11%, even though the cost of housing in Arlington is 113% higher than the national average.
Ms. Webster, if you can conclude.
And that's it. Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Victoria Wu, followed by Charlotte Mallor.
Hey, y'all.
Good evening, Ms. Wu.
How's it going? Hi. Hello, neighbors. My name is Victoria, and when I moved to this community in 2012, this library was my very first local friend. So I am so grateful to have the opportunity to be here today to ask you to please reconsider the proposed cuts to our library's budget. I understand library funding is one of the smallest line items in the budget, meaning that our library already does so much with so little. I am continually amazed by all the ways that our library shows up for our community. It is truly an invaluable resource to all. One of the most popular ways it shows up is through its digital collections. And unfortunately, this is not something our library can just get creative about. Digital collections are expensive, and they simply require funding. I ask that you please reconsider the cuts to the budget so that the library can support the collection to meet the community need. I'm perhaps a bit biased, but I do think Arlington is one of the best communities in the country. Just look at how many of us love it enough to show up today. But a great community requires a great library, a well-supported, strong library. And a well-supported, strong library requires a well-supported, strong collection. I believe deeply in what our library provides. This is a transformative place for everyone. So I ask you to please reconsider the cuts. And if you could increase the budget, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Our next speaker is Charlotte Mallor, followed by Jason Demasso.
Good evening, Ms. Mallor.
Hi, I'm here with my coworker, Eliza Hyatt. We're here for ASME Local 3001, which represents Arlington County general employees. Thank you for funding the existing union contract, which covers those of us in trades. We are distressed, however, at the elimination of jobs in the context of thousands of federal workers in our community who've already lost their jobs. Why is the county creating more unemployment? Two positions eliminated in this budget are in DHS's employment services, right when our community needs these professionals more than ever. These jobs actually provide services to Arlingtonians. They review the plans for building permits. They communicate with the public what's happening in their neighborhood, including in emergencies. They prevent evictions. And yeah, they also put library books on the shelf. Compared to our county's overall budget, the cost savings is small. It's $8.4 million. We urge you to think creatively and equitably about the budget. The proposed 3.5% raise for all county employees will cost around $10 million. Instead, what about a flat raise just for middle and lower-paid workers? $2,000 raise would be more than 3.5% for hundreds of county workers, and it would save around $4 to $5 million. That's a long way toward eliminating any need for layoffs of our coworkers. However you balance this budget with taxes, with fees, we urge you to use an abundance mindset as well as an equity mindset. Finally, to our coworkers and our coworkers being laid off, these cuts are aimed at employees who are not covered by the union. Those of us under trades are not facing layoffs. In fact, we have a 4% raise coming. Let's pull together now and finish unionizing.
Thank you both.
Our next speaker is Jason Demasso, followed by Charles Haddon.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jason Demasso, president of Dominion Stage of Arlington. We are a small community theater celebrating our 75th year of creating live theater here in Arlington County. Our mission is to create art that tells the stories and elevates the voices of marginalized members of society and that represents all of the people in our community. Our shows spread a message of inclusivity, which is needed more than ever right now, and artists are the only ones who are empowered with the ability to spread that message to a broad audience. We have been able to continue this work for 75 years due to Arlington County's commitment to supporting the arts. Our most well-attended and profitable shows are performed in the Gunston Middle School Black Box Theater. For years, the county has allowed us to use this theater space with a 10% surcharge fee. This 10% fee model has promoted the arts and allows us to bring innovative and inclusive arts to the community at an affordable price. This model is the only thing that has enabled Dominion Stage to continue performing. Renting space in an alternative venue is not a viable option for our small theater. The proposed cuts to arts funding in Arlington County will make Gunston's black box performance space no longer viable for us. This will be devastating to Dominion Stage both financially and artistically. We structure our seasons and select our shows to align with the current funding model. The proposed change would end our ability to perform in Gunston Theater and severely limit the types of shows we are able to do as a result, and we are not alone. All of the performing arts organizations in Arlington County who use any of the county theaters will be affected. Arlington has for years been a community that is known for our rich and diverse arts culture. These proposed changes would have a severe negative impact on that culture and the performing arts that are a part of it by driving small theater companies out of existence. The county is estimating that the new fee structure will bring in $70,000 in additional revenue. On behalf of the performing arts in Arlington County, we respectfully ask that the board vote to allocate this $70,000 to continue funding the costs of operating theater venues in Arlington County and keep live theater alive in Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Haddon, followed by Eleanor Hodges.
Good evening, Mr. Haddon. I'm Charles Haddon, chair of the seven-member community advisory group that Sheriff Kiros established to make his office transparent to the community and to receive independent community perspectives on the office's operations. I'm here to urge the county board to make the pay increase for the sheriff's uniform deputies the same as the pay increase proposed for the police department and fire department. Limiting the deputy's pay increase to the 3.5% proposed in the budget will both exacerbate the existing inequity between the deputies and Arlington's other first responders, and it will perpetuate the problem in retaining current deputies and hiring new ones. Because there are not enough deputies, the ones who are there regularly must work mandatory overtime. Requiring them to work overtime makes an already stressful job even more so, adversely affecting the current deputy's wellness and morale, and it substantially hinders the ability to recruit new deputies. But even with overtime, the vacancies mean there often are not enough deputies available. That results in the inmates having to be locked down, which takes a terrible toll on their mental, emotional, and physical health, that in turn can result in the inmates exhibiting negative behavior toward the deputies, which I think you heard from another speaker today. It's only right to give the deputies the same consideration as the other first responders and give them the same percentage increase. It'll be better for the overall health of deputies and inmates alike, with the side benefit of reducing the amount of money that will have to be spent on mandatory overtime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddon. The next speaker?
Our next speaker is Eleanor Hodges, followed by Tessa Cannon.
Good evening, Mrs. Hodges.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Hodges. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of both EcoAction Arlington, where I serve as executive director, and our partner, the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions. EcoAction Arlington is proud of our 47-year partnership with Arlington County. We are very grateful for the allocation of $240,000 in the FY '26 budget for tree planting on private property. This will enable us to not lose momentum in our critical work to plant trees throughout the community with a focus on addressing tree inequity. We also urge the board to reinstate funding for NVCT, which oversees private property put in conservation easements, a helpful tool to preserve tree canopy coverage and important natural resources. We also applaud the county board for accelerating climate action with the adoption of the climate resolution. Looking forward, we hope that budgets will reflect climate-oriented budget analysis as called for in the climate resolution and is consistent with best practices for local governments. My focus tonight is to highlight budget implications for our Energy Masters program. Since 2011, by leveraging volunteers, Energy Masters has been helping families living in affordable housing apartments by providing energy efficiency improvements which reduce carbon emissions, make their homes more comfortable, and reduce their utility bills. Unfortunately, Energy Masters was not selected for community development funding and is at risk of being shuttered next year. Energy Masters' goal: Directly support the county's climate action plan, and we help families that can most benefit from improved energy efficiency and savings from reduced utilities. We hope we can explore ways to make this critical program continue next year and continue to help families here in Arlington invest in energy efficiency improvements in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Our next speaker is Tessa Cannon, followed by Michael Gearing.
Good evening, Ms. Cannon.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak. I, along with many others, are just a huge fan of the Arlington Public Library. It's been just an incredible resource. As someone who has lived here for about eight years, it's been such a safe place for me to work and study. I want to echo just what others have said about the impact, about the e-materials. I recently tried to check out about eight books. Most of them had already a 10-week wait, and so I just had to wait a little bit longer. I was able to get one, which was great, but the expected increase in that time and that waiting period is pretty big. And so I just want to echo that access to books of different forms really shouldn't be a luxury, and I think these proposed budget cuts can kind of influence that a little bit and almost push that idea on us. One of the unique things that I've really benefited from, from our e-collection at the Arlington Library, which is proposed to be cut, is some of the databases that we have access to. So I am really honored to actually be an up-and-coming small business owner in Arlington County, and so many small business owners have encouraged me to check out the free resources that the Arlington Library has for us, including those databases. So they're really critical for helping us build out our business plans to understand more of our demographic here in Arlington. Even the biz launch, which is located in Boston, I was just talking to one of their representatives about some of the budget cuts, and they didn't even know how they were going to be impacted by it. So it's something that's hypercritical for us as I'm planning that business, connecting with local banks, trying to get funding. So I just want to echo the importance, not only for the books that we have access to, but for the small business owners who are just seeking to thrive in the beautiful Arlington community and really grow, and how we will be impacted by that as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Haddon. The next one?
Our next speaker is Michael Gearing, followed by Kate Mattis.
Good evening, Mrs. Gearing.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gearing, and I'm a longtime resident of Arlington County. And I've come here tonight to throw my full support for increased funding for- for increased funding for housing grants, permanent supportive housing, and homeless and shelter services. At a time right now when we're seeing our federal government is being gutted and our social safety net is increasingly being practically obliterated on the federal level, it is even more imperative that we support more funding for affordable housing and more funding for housing the homeless. While we understand that money is tight and funds are scarce, we hope that you will support increased funding for the following programs: 17.6 million for the county's housing grant program and a new position for caseloads; 7 million for permanent supportive housing; and 6.8 million to address homelessness through shelters and services. At the same time, we propose decreasing funding for two programs: 2.1 million for eviction prevention and 12.3 million for the Affordable Housing Investment Fund. Now, we know that the county has many worthy funding priorities, and we really hope that you will support increased funding for housing. And we just, you know, support housing. We hope that's one of them, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gearing.
Our next speaker is Kate Meadows, followed by Kishori Mahalikar. Excuse me.
Good evening, Ms. Meadows.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. I'm here today to speak against the proposed increase rate of our property tax. I bought my home in 1989. It's a modest 1,600-square-foot home. I'm a middle-class parent. I raised my daughter, and I'm a single parent, by the way. Raised my daughter and still live in my house. Over time, some of the neighbors moved out. They went to bigger homes. I stayed here because I love Arlington, and it's near DC where I worked, and I had to rush home every night to pick up my daughter. Now I'm retired. I'm active in my community, and I plan to stay in that house until they carry me out. And I've managed my finances well. But what has not been easy to manage is that line item in my budget that says real estate taxes. So let me put that in context. In 2010, when I was still working, my real estate taxes were about 3% of my income. Five years later, my real estate taxes were 4% of my income. I retired with a good union pension, and yet by 2023, my real estate taxes were 7% of my income, and that's with the good COLA that I had on my income. And this year, the taxes will be 8% of my income. So working people are barely getting any COL increases, and some are losing their jobs, and some retirees, including middle-class retirees, are struggling. I strongly support my civic association, the Bluemont Civic Association, in its call to rein in property tax. And I'm asking you to recognize the rising burden of cost, fees, and real estate taxes on fixed-income seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Technically, by the way, this is testimony that should go to the Thursday meeting, which is about the tax rate. But point well taken.
Sorry, I had a medical appointment, and I won't be able to get there.
Just for future reference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kishori Mahalikar, followed by Kurt Moser.
Good evening, Ms. Mahalikar.
Hi. My name is Kishori Mahalikar, and I'm an Arlington resident and have been one since 2022. I love living here. I love our community, the diversity and the culture here and its residents. So I just felt like it was important to be here today just to give my two cents, just for concerns generally about the budget. Since 2023, I've been horrified by our country's United States complicity in Israel's genocide in the Gaza Strip. The knowledge that my country has provided Israel with weapons and everything it needs to exterminate an ethnic group of 2 million people has filled me with deep shame and disgust. Just this month, Israel has cut off entry of food and water to 2.2 million people. And the UN says that there's only enough flour to last these people for two days. I don't want to be complicit in a genocide. I don't want my town to be complicit in a genocide. And I don't want our tax money or our budget to be going there in any way. I don't want it to fall into the hands of businesses like Elbit Systems, which provides Israel technology to commit mass murder and aids Israel in their ongoing genocide against the Palestinians in Gaza. So I just want to make sure that we take a hard look at our budget and make sure that we're investing in our community, our libraries in particular, and our schools, and not the mass extermination of 2.2 million people. Let's create a better Arlington together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahalikar.
Our next speaker is Kurt Moser, followed by Naida Miaris.
Good evening, Mr. Moser.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I serve on the board of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, and I'm also the president of the small nonprofit Four Mile Run Conservatory Foundation. I would like to offer brief comments to support keeping NVCT funding in the budget. At Lower Four Mile Run, where the Four Mile Run Conservatory Foundation's efforts are focused, success of conservation and restoration depends on the engagement of multiple jurisdictions. That section of the run forms the boundary between Arlington County and the city of Alexandria, and the watershed includes parts of Fairfax County and Falls Church City. Similarly, NVCT's work, which spans numerous Northern Virginia jurisdictions, requires support and engagement from each county and city across its service area. And its land conservation work in Northern Virginia benefits Arlington residents and neighbors and others. From Lower Four Mile Run's history, it is apparent, though unfortunate, that it is easy to neglect places that don't easily fit into the responsibility of a single jurisdiction, a tragedy of the commons. I urge you not to let this be the case for land conservation here and ask that you include full funding and maintain the county's commitment to NVCT and its mission to preserve urban, suburban, and rural lands and waters for habitat, recreation, and healthy communities. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. The next speaker?
Our next speaker is Naida Miaris, joining us virtually.
Good evening.
I cannot hear you, unfortunately. Can we resolve this?
There's an audio issue. It may be on our end. Ms. Miaris, if you don't mind, we can circle back to you while we diagnose this.
We apologize. We will try to resolve that, Ms. Miaris. Let's go to the next speaker, and in the meantime, we're working on this.
Our next speaker is Robert Crowe, followed by Andrew Painter.
Good evening, Mr. Crowe.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I reviewed the budget a little bit, and I understand it's a balancing act. And thank you for not increasing the property tax even more. I know it's already expensive enough for all of us living here. My biggest feedback on that is that there's cuts in the programs and services around, you know, 12 million or so. And in the meantime, there's also increases in the housing subsidies. And, you know, I grew up here, but I lived in, you know, Illinois and Pennsylvania. And it seems, you know, part of why I moved back here is that the programs and services are, you know, really good here. And so I think that's a big thing that draws people here. And, you know, with respect to the subsidies, you know, I noticed there's, you know, multimillion dollars in increases in the subsidies for housing and whatnot. And it seems like the housing subsidies are going to people who are coming from other jurisdictions surrounding. And it's not serving the purpose of allowing people who live and work here to keep them from getting priced out. And so I feel like it's not serving its purpose. And so maybe what you could do is just keep the, you know, the subsidies and the affordable housing funding at its current levels instead of increasing it and use some of that money to help fund some of these programs, which, you know, some of these other folks have been talking about a lot. So I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Have we resolved the issue with Ms. Miaris?
I propose we continue through the speaker list. We're working on it. At the end of our two-minute speakers, we have two speakers to circle back to.
Mr. Terber. Or Painter. I apologize.
Yes, our next speaker is Andrew Painter, followed by Peggy Thurber.
Mr. Painter. Maybe after all, we go to Ms. Thurber until Mr. Painter comes.
Yes, Peggy Thurber, and followed by Ariana Franco.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Thurber. I'm a retired Coast Guard officer. I've been an Arlington resident since 1992. I'm a former library volunteer and a frequent library patron, and I'm speaking on behalf of the library budget that it not be decreased in the coming year. I'm not here to reiterate many of the great things that have already been said about library services, but to share my family's personal story. My mother was born in Ukraine in 1936. During her childhood, her village was invaded by the Nazis. And her mother, a widow with three small children, survived as serving as a translator for the occupiers. When the tides of war changed and the Nazis retreated in the face of the advancing Soviet troops, my grandmother feared for her life because of her collaboration. So she, along with my mother, my two uncles, and my great-grandmother, escaped westward where to Germany, which welcomed them as members of the Aryan race. Their trip by horse, drawn, covered wagon train would take more than eight months. And along the way, they survived bombings, highway bandits, and starvation. At one point, my grandmother left the wagon in hopes of cleaning leftover potatoes in the surrounding fields. And my mother still remembers thinking they would never see their mother again because she didn't make it back to the moving wagon train for three days. Having survived all this, it's important that we not demonize the other, which is what happened in that time with the Jews and the Romani and is happening now with immigrants. And the library supports those immigrants with resources. And we can't let free speech and censorship happen here as it did there. And at that time, nobody thought what happened could happen. And I think it's important for us to realize it could.
Thank you, Ms. Thurber.
Our next speaker is Ariana Franco, followed by Natalia Franco.
Good evening, Ms. Franco.
Hi, my name is Ariana. I'm a current senior at Wakefield High School. I'm a member of the Liberty Promise Club. Our club is all about helping immigrant students with things like college applications, scholarships, jobs, and senior projects. As an immigrant student myself, I know how stressful it can be to figure out college, financial aid, or even where to look for job opportunities. It's not always easy to find the right information or resources. And that's why this club is so important. Liberty Promise makes sure no one has to go through these challenges alone. In our club, we help its students by walking through college and scholarship applications step by step, giving tips on how to create resumes and apply for jobs, offering support and resources for senior projects. Being part of this club has been a great experience because I've learned so much and I've seen students achieve things they didn't think were possible, whether it's getting accepted into college, earning scholarships, or landing a job. This club has made a real impact. However, to continue making a difference, we need support. Funding helps us provide essential resources like application materials, workshop supplies, and even college field trips for the students to explore their future opportunities. With our show support, we can reach more students and expand our programs to make an even greater impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franco.
Our next speaker is Natalia Franco, followed by Melody. And just as a reminder, when we conclude our two-minute speakers, we will return to anyone that was missed before proceeding to our threes.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Natalia Franco, and I'm a senior in Wakefield High School. It's an absolute honor to stand here before to stand here of all of you and talk about something that has truly changed my life. Liberty Promise. I joined Liberty Promise one year ago, and since I was in that program, I really enjoy being in there. It isn't just a program. It's a family. It's a community that feeds our people, gives them hope, and opens doors to a future filled with possibilities. When I first joined Liberty Promise, I wasn't sure what to expect, but from day one, I felt welcome. I felt seen. This program doesn't just offer resources. It offers mentorships, encouragement, and I believe in every individual who walks through its door. It teaches us that no matter where we come from, our future is ours to shape. It gives us the tools to build a future with confidence. Your support then just found a program that they changed lives. They give young people like me opportunities we never thought we had. They help us develop skills, pursue our dreams, and became the leaders of tomorrow. Liberty Promise has given me more than I could ever put into words. It has given me a family that supports me, mentors who guide me, and the confidence to believe in myself. And today, I ask you all to help keep this promise alive for me, for my peers, and for the many more who will come after us. Your support matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Franco.
Our next speaker is Melody, followed by our last two-minute speaker, Myra Mejia Villarreal.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. I am a senior from high school. I am a student from Liberty Promise. This is a club that helped me prepare to college, job, scholarships, and visit universities. This is a club meaning that too much to me because it's the only club that has too much fun and be more social and be more confident with myself. I am happy that Liberty Promise is part of my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next and final two-minute speaker is Myra Moya Villarreal.
Good evening, Ms. Mejia Villarreal.
Good evening. My name is Myra Moya. I'm a senior from Wakefield High School. I would like to talk about Liberty Promise. This is a club from my school that really helped me getting involved, doing scholarships, or applying to universities because personally speaking, for me and my family, it was really difficult and hard to, like, try to afford a university. And we, like, my parents doesn't speak English very well. I'm always the translator. And, yeah, it was, like, hard to find any, like, scholarships or how to apply. And these clubs, like, it means very much to me because I know so many friends that are Hispanic and, oh my God, and, like, don't know how to apply of many other things. Others just came, and they think that they don't have the opportunity to go to a university. And this club, like, opened my mind. And we were, like, we went to a university, like, for field trips, and it was so fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I believe this concludes our two-minute segment, but there is one person that we couldn't get back, Ms. Miaris.
We do have a couple of folks to circle back to. The first who was not available is speaker number eight, Caitlin Keating Betoni.
Betoni. Betonti.
Last call, Caitlin. All right, moving along. Our next two-minute speaker was, excuse me, Ms. Naida Miaris. If you are online, we should be able to hear you now.
Hello.
There we go.
Good evening.
Now it works. Good evening.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate all the great things Arlington County does. However, I must object to the continued tax rate increases and unnecessary spending. I object to increases in the meal tax from 4% to 5%, in the meal tax from four to five percent, which is really increasing the meals tax from ten to eleven percent because the state already charges a six percent tax on meals. Increasing the meals tax disproportionately impacts lower-income households because they devote the largest portion of their income to restaurant food and beverages as compared to other income levels. And restaurants are already struggling with decreased patronage from inflation. This cost increase just continues to drive the downward spiral. Plus, this tax height is inconsistent with what most other nearby jurisdictions charge. I also object to significantly increasing the housing grant program every year. This budget proposes a 16.5% increase in housing grants. Almost six percent of the entire county budget is dedicated to housing programs. This is unheard of. Finally, the race to rebuilding Charleston community grants to the tune of $1.8 million should be eliminated. This program is unnecessary and is basically a giveaway to charity. One recipient was an organization providing pet care. Why are taxpayers paying for pet care for county residents? Arlington residents should be able to fund charities of their choice, not have the county increase tax burden or reduce other services, like the library, digital collections, or arts, to give money away to charities that the county chooses. Plus, the use of grants to NGOs reduces accountability for juris, judicious use of county funds. Instead, perhaps the county could run a volunteer charity drive and let the residents decide for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mejias.
Thank you. And our next two-minute speaker, who was unavailable, is Andrew Painter. Going once, going twice, Andrew Painter. All right, moving along to our three-minute speakers, beginning with Ms. Audrey Clement, joining us virtually.
I'm Audrey Clement from Westover. I'm also a library booster. Inspection of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget reveals a tax-funded expenditure increase of 3.1%, which is about the rate of inflation. That's the good news, and I applaud the county manager for that. The bad news is that every year, gimme groups demand millions in additional largesse. County Board rolls over, and taxpayers fill the bill. The county manager has argued that things are different this year because $88 million in federal funds are in limbo. If they are withheld, the county will be forced to draw down its strategic reserve to meet operating expenses. To meet that contingency, the county manager put an additional $11.5 million in the strategic reserve, bringing it to $33 million. But that leaves the county exposed to $50 million in potentially foregone federal revenue. If, as expected, gimme groups like AHIF extract more than its current budget allocation, the additional reserve funds will be wiped out. Last year, AHIF supporters demanded and got an additional $11 million in one-time funding on top of an ongoing allocation of $10.5 million, largely funded by a one-cent tax rate increase. This year, AHIF funding, not including Barcroft loan buy-down and debt service, is only $12.3 million, well below last year's $21.5 million. Since the affordable housing community thinks that taxing people out of their homes to provide housing for others is okay, it's not likely to settle for an AHIF cut. Therefore, county board has to look for other ways to save money. The proposed budget includes average step increases for fire and police of 11% and 9% respectively, while general employees, including the sheriff's office, get a 3.5% increase. This salary differential is as unnecessary as it is unfair. The impetus for paying it was arguably Black Lives Matter, which deprecated law enforcement and disincentivized recruitment. Now that DEI is no longer official government policy, interest in policing might pick up and reduce the need for a salary differential to keep cops on the beat. DHS, which plans to add 20 new positions to an already bloated staff of 800, offers another savings opportunity. If the $2.7 million allocated for those positions were instead reallocated to needed services like eviction relief, there might be more funds for the gimme groups, and wouldn't that be nice? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clement.
Our next speaker is Alan Rousen, followed by Sam Levison.
Good evening, Ms. Rousen.
Good evening. My name is Alan Rousen. I'm Executive Director of the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. We've been a proud partner of Arlington for over 20 years as your regional land trust, and during that time, we've protected nearly 40 properties and nature preserves across the county that safeguard wildlife, tree canopy, trails, and clean water sources while making our communities more healthy, sustainable, and thriving. It was extremely disappointing to learn that our annual funding of $87,000 is being considered for evisceration or a significant funding cut as other surrounding NOVA jurisdictions are expanding our partnership. We do, however, truly appreciate the individual conversations we've had with board members over the last few days about finding a path forward. I've heard it said a few times lately that our work is not a critical need right now in the face of budgetary hardship, and that we need to take a pause on fully funding NVCT's partnership in the county for the foreseeable future. In our view, this would be a very short-sighted decision, and it, and it will ultimately cost the county much more in the long run to dis, to discontinue or curtail our relationship together. Whether it be invasive plant management work we do on our park-adjacent preserves, creating natural stormwater solutions that have saved neighborhoods like Woodmont from flooding risks, or taking on ownership and management of natural lands the county wasn't able to own, NVCT has and would continue to save Arlington's significant climate mitigation and infrastructure dollars if we're able to build on our current work. When Ann Thurbor's generous land donation to NVCT and the county was finalized several years ago, this board was adamant that we protect and steward the property in perpetuity rather than sell it for a seven-figure sum to create new conservation programs in Arlington. Since that time, we have put $60,000 of our own resources into the property while building a wonderful partnership with Friends of Urban Agriculture to develop a community garden on the site. Helping tackle food insecurity across the county is work to further invest in, not put in jeopardy. Three years ago, NVCT was directed in county budget language to create and pursue a pipeline of projects and prospects for land conservation in Arlington. In response, NVCT raised nearly $50,000 in outside grants and put hundreds of hours of staff time into a new GIS mapping tool that allows the organization to rank all properties in the county based on environmental value and prioritize them for conservation potential. Everyone who we have met with, county staff and board alike, have been very excited to now implement the plan. This is work to further invest in, not put in jeopardy. Ultimately, NVCT is very understanding of the difficult budget situation that this board faces, but cutting an already low amount of funding for our county's natural lands and waters will provide no real budget relief as development projects expand and climate change impacts demand more and more resources. Let's work together to fully support partners like EcoAction Arlington and NVCT because the critical work we do helps make Arlington a place where we all want to live. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rousen. The next speaker?
Our next speaker is Sam Levison, followed by Kelvin Manures. And I'll give you a 30-second heads-up, given that we'll have your slides up.
Oh, I'm sorry?
And I'll give you a 30-second heads-up, given that we've got slides.
Okay. Oh, well, yeah, I'm just making for the slides. Yeah. All right. I'm good?
Go ahead.
Okay. I could claim that a triangle has four sides. Now, of course, it actually has three sides, not four, and it has three sides even if I tell 100 people that a triangle has four sides, even if 1,000 people tell me that it has four sides, or even if 10,000 people make Facebook posts trying to claim that a triangle has four sides. Just because that claim might be made a bunch of times doesn't automatically mean it's true, and obviously, this sounds really ridiculous, I understand. But similarly, you may have heard people trying to deny Israel's apartheid and genocide against Palestinians. But again, simply denying them a bunch of times doesn't automatically mean that they don't exist. Instead, I often reference these two reports from Amnesty International, nearly 300 pages long, that have very in-depth arguments and include many primary sources such as laws, ordinances, and even social media posts, to make their cases very crystal clear. Next slide. And furthermore, just because y'all might insist a bunch of times that Palestine isn't a local issue, doesn't automatically make that true. As I've shown here, a lot of Arlington taxpayers' dollars go through a lot of different layers to ultimately end up in the hands of companies that fund genocide and apartheid and occupation in Palestine, companies that both the BDS, Boycott Divestment Sanctions Movement, and AFSC, American Friends Service Committee, are urging divestment from. We see this happen both through the Office of the Treasurer, as I've shown up there, through funds such as their LGIP, Local Government Investment Pool, as well as through Arlington Economic Development, which boasts about a number of weapons companies that have offices or even headquarters in Arlington County. Next slide. Now, across the country, we've seen many examples of local governments taking at least some steps in the right direction. We saw Cuyahoga County, home to Cleveland, Ohio, freeze $3 million in Israel bonds. We saw Portland, Maine pass a resolution barring investment in any company complicit in the occupation of Palestine. And we saw Alameda County in the Bay Area of California transition $32 million from Caterpillar bonds and direct the Treasurer to create an ethical investment policy. Now, especially considering where Arlington is geographically, this local government could take similar robust measures to not only divest but also prevent future problematic investments from reoccurring. And this could have a ripple effect across the country, as far south as Miami-Dade County, Florida, to as far north as Fairbanks, Alaska. But alas, no such thing has happened yet, which doesn't even surprise me, but is really disappointing.
30 seconds.
Part of the county manager's office vision is to enhance Arlington's reputation as a high-performing, learning, and caring organization. And right now, that may be very true for a handful of wealth hoarders in northern Arlington, but there's a lot lacking from that vision, both locally and globally, and it would come much closer to reality if the county would join the likes of Cleveland, Alameda County, Portland, Maine, in divesting from genocide and apartheid, and put that money where it's needed most in the local community, as you've heard from many other people here.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kelvin Manures, followed by Bonnie Setzer. Mr. Manures, likewise, I will give you a 30-second heads-up.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable members of the Arlington County Board and our honorable Board Manager. Manager of the County Board of Arlington County. My name's Kelvin Manures. I'm the founder and executive director of Arm &amp; Arm. We're a peer-to-peer behavioral health organization that works with individuals during high crises, transition periods of their life. I'm accompanied today by retired Master Sergeant Scott Cassoni, who's a certified peer recovery specialist, and Arlington County Gang Task Force member and peer recovery specialist Francisco Rojas, who accompany us when we are doing community outreach efforts. Today, I'm bringing before you what I have presented here on the board. Local nonprofits do invaluable work, along with Arlington County. Real grassroots, real grassroots, boots-to-the-ground community outreach must be included as a budgetary item in all Arlington County. There is no substitute for the connection that gets made by speaking with individuals face-to-face authentically and listening to what their challenges are, and then sharing some of our own story with them. Through sharing these, the struggles in our own lived experiences, we're able to meet individuals where they are and make them more comfortable as they are now more connected with us, our outreach team members, and are able to talk about the real issues that they are living with. We're seeking continued funding for our programming and our services that we're doing, providing here in Arlington County. We're also asking for support for the implementation of our Erase the Divide initiative that is in Arlington, that will include Arlington Mill as well as the work that we're currently doing in Green Valley. This initiative will especially, will specifically address the needs of young adults between the ages of 18 and 26, both in the community and on the verge of release from the Arlington County Detention Center, and continue to provide services once released from the criminal justice system. The proposed program includes our signature game-on-the-line immersion training, community support forums called Shop Talk, and supplemental focus groups for more targeted connections that empower individuals with tools that can be utilized during situations of both prevention and intervention. Through these programs, we aim to reduce recidivism and promote the positive reintegration of individuals back into the communities by empowering them with essential skills for making healthier choices, building stronger family units, and fostering a shared sense of responsibility and communal support. The need for this program is urgent. Both Arlington Mill and Green Valley face similar challenges, including substance use, mental health issues, and lingering effects of overpolicing, even if it's in the minds of the community members.
Time's elapsed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, give me just a moment, is Bonnie Setzer, followed by Bernard Byrne, joining us virtually.
Ms. Setzer, good evening. Good evening, Arlington County Board.
Good evening.
As you know, my name is Bonnie Setzer. I am standing to represent affordable housing and the funds provided for it. This is why affordable housing is important to me. I was taught at a young age that those who needed a place to call their own should earn that privilege by being the taxpayer who had a job. I was taught to fear the homeless, that they were dangerous, to consider them with no place in this world, and to deny their very own existence. In 2014, after becoming homeless myself, everything I learned growing up was shaken in its very core. I learned that I and the other homeless with me were just people in need of help, and that it could happen to anyone. Even those with money and a nice job could lose it all one day and face homelessness themselves. I learned from my experience at that time that I, as well as the others in my social standing, were not something to be feared. They were just people who were vulnerable to the world's unforgiving nature, experiencing this much fortune in their lives that they could not have predicted or had been prepared for. Society only addresses those who are accepted, those who have a voice, those who have a place. Is it up for someone else to decide if we should have these things? Aren't we all people? Don't we all deserve to live and have a place to call our home? We need each other. We cannot live our whole lives expected to be counted as the fortunate. We need to ask for help when we need help. United, we are not alone. Affordable housing is important to me because without it, I lose my home, security, and my stability. It is my hope that others see the importance of being seen, accepted, safe, and home. Thank you for this opportunity today to express the need for us all to be counted as one. Without this aid and the funding to provide it, there will be countless people without a place. Thank you for listening to my voice.
Thank you, Ms. Setzer. Good evening.
Our next speaker, joining virtually, is Bernard Byrne, followed by Rebecca Dieter.
Hello, it's Bernie Byrne again. Restore the funds in the Department, the Department of Parks and Recreation's budget for the temporary park ranger position at the Blument Junction Caboose. The DPR removed those funds from its budget during the COVID emergency. The caboose is located at Blument Junction Park, south of Wilson Boulevard in the Blument neighborhood. It is near the WOD trail and a soccer field. Before the COVID IT emergency, a temporary park ranger kept the caboose open on weekend afternoons from Memorial Day to Labor Day, only on weekend afternoons. The caboose had many visitors, especially when the soccer field was in use. The caboose has historical photographs and artifacts that I and others donated. Now, nobody can see them now. The ranger position requires a full-time equivalent, but only a small amount of funds. The emergency has ended, and restoring these to the caboose, the ranger would not take much money. Restore the funds to the DPR's budget by reducing the amounts allocated to the department for mowing expenses and mowing contracts. Excessive mowing of public spaces is destroying many natural resources, much vegetation, and much wildlife habitat. You've probably seen this along WOD trail and others. It is killing many young trees. Mowing is one of the worst misuses of county money in the entire budget. Please divert some of that money that you have in that mowing, for mowing, to the restoration of the funding for the, for the temporary park ranger in the Blument Junction caboose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. The next?
Next speaker is Rebecca Dieter, followed by Peter Raven Hansen.
Good evening, Ms. Dieter.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca.
My name is Rebecca Dieter, and I speak tonight on behalf of Voice, Virginians Organized for Interfaith Community Engagement. We appreciate the commitment in the proposed budget to continue to follow some of Arlington's most core values in these challenging times, including strong support for our most vulnerable neighbors. Supporting those who are marginalized is at the core of every faith tradition that we represent as an organization. We ask you to consider two actions to help Arlington residents today, and at the same time, ensure a strong future for the county. We ask you, first, to please guarantee sufficient funding to enable the county to create a free, multi-day after-school program for our most at-risk teens, a program where strong, trusting relationships are built up over time. Thankfully, youth opioid deaths and overdoses have declined here, but we still hear from teens and their parents about the prevalence of teen anxiety, depression, loneliness, and drug use. Now, already at-risk teens must deal with major new stressors due to the destructive federal government actions of recent months. Research validates what parents and teens themselves say. Structured activities out of school can discourage risky behavior. Such programs can build self-esteem and encourage supportive relationships with peers and trusting adults. The county has done a good job of improving teen intervention services. Now, let's focus on strong prevention services to help ensure other children will not reach the point of needing serious intervention. We welcome the recent additions of after-school activities, however, the need remains for incorporating a free, ongoing, dependable, multi-day program for teens that can support them and their futures. Second, while we appreciate the increase in housing grant funding, Voice urges you to look for creative ways to increase the allocation for the Affordable Housing Investment Fund. We know that housing, demand for housing, far outstrips supply, that federal low-income housing programs are at risk, and that today's decisions will affect housing supply far into the future. We believe this is also an excellent time to consider low-to-no-cost changes in ordinances, policies, and procedures that could greatly reduce cost and time in getting housing built. The resilience of our youth and efforts to increase housing accessibility and stability for families are intertwined. Both help determine Arlington's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dieter. Next.
Good evening. My name is Peter Raven Hansen. I'm a member of the Community Advisory Board to the Sheriff's Office. I want to talk to you about three Arlington institutions. One you've already heard about, which is Arlington's largest mental health institution. The other is its single-largest addiction treatment facility. And the third is its largest homeless shelter. And I'm talking about the Arlington County Detention Facility, our jail. It serves all those functions. Half of its 384 residents have had mental health alerts. Almost as many have other health and addiction problems or have experienced homelessness. The people that stay there, 70% of them stay more than a month, many upwards of, many months up to a year. Therefore, the staff of the jail are not simply jailers, as important as that custodial role is. They are healthcare providers, they are mental health workers, they are addiction treaters, they are shelter providers for 384 residents. And while some medical specialists provide some of these services, the care that the residents need is not something that can only be given from 9 to 5. It's a 24/7 need, and that means that all the correctional staff are pressed into duty providing this kind of care, with the result that they're often doing it during mandatory overtime that require lockdowns, as you've heard from prior speaker. The care that they provide makes a huge difference to the residents. It's the difference between giving them a fighting chance to successfully re-enter society when they're released or recidivating. And in fact, it's the difference for some of them between life and death. A recent four-year study of 44 jails found that the very few jails that, like ours, provide care as well as custody, make huge improvements in residents' health, care, and treatment, and a 90% reduction in mortality. The 90% reduction should echo with the board here in light of the fact that we've had eight deaths in the jail before the new sheriff took over, under a model of for-profit medical care through a contractor, which the model he is changing. The same study suggested that jails like ours, the very few jails like ours, are effectively countywide ERs. That's how they function for many of the residents that come in there. Last year, our detention facility staff conducted or oversaw more than 2,500 medical screenings for residents, more than 1,500 physical exams, numerous withdrawal protocols, numerous medically-assisted addiction treatments, which is the way to go these days, and numerous suicide watches. And the numbers will increase this year. In short, the staff of our jail, the detention facility, are tasked with the work of being jailers, healthcare givers, ER responders, all at the same time, while also preparing the residents for re-entry. So, at a time when the new sheriff is, has hired a full-time medical director, and for the first time-
Your time has elapsed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is, is internalizing the healthcare staff. What message do you send by saying, "We're going to give you 1/3 the salary increase that your fellow public safety workers get for doing many of the same things"?
Thank you, Mr. Hansen.
Next, we have Sarah Zulo, followed by Robert Elston.
Good evening, Ms. Zulo.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation to speak at today's budget meetings. My name is Sarah Zulo. I'm the executive director of the Ethiopian Community Development Council. For over four decades, ECDC has provided high-quality social services to new carmer and historically underserved populations. We have operated a comprehensive network of services that address housing instability, employment, food insecurity, health disparity, and immigration, ensuring that the most vulnerable Arlington residents receive the support they need to thrive. The new administration, executive order suspending our resettlement budget, have completely changed the landscape and forced us to readjust. We currently have 213 open cases, and most of them are female. 40% are children under 13. And please do note that we have also resettled 2,000-plus immigrants who have worked through our front door since 2021. They are all legal, and they all play by the rules. So, we are here today to ask the county for sufficient funding so we can continue to provide, to provide the most essential core services for the most vulnerable Arlington County residents. Specifically, we are here asking for $200,000 for the following specific services. We want to return sufficient staffing capacity to respond to the most pressing need of the underserved population. Our culturally competent case manager with language capacity can care for 25 to 30 families at one time. Continuous employment services to our newest case who are still struggling to find work and secure to pay for their rent. Housing support to assist family to secure housing, renew their lease, and avoid eviction. Continuous intensive case manager for single moms and accompanied minors and victims of domestic violence. Immigration services for status adjustment. Health service linking client to primary physician rather, can you still hear me? Thank you. Rather than having client end up in the ER. So, there is no substitute for the services that we are providing for the most vulnerable, the newcomer in Arlington County. We will do all of the, all this effort is designated to move our client out of sufficiency, integrate into society, and lift them out of poverty as soon as possible so they do not end up at your door. We do thank you for many, many years of partnership. We hope to continue to work with you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zulo. Next speaker.
Robert Elston.
Hi, I'm, I'm Robert Elston. I also am at ECDC with Sarah. I'm the Community Engagement and Donor Outreach Coordinator. As you heard from Sarah, ECDC has been helping immigrants and underserved communities for decades. We've been through a lot, but nothing quite like what we were seeing today. What's already happened is far worse than what we experienced during the first Trump administration. Our executive director, Sarah, has used every tool at her disposal to absorb the loss of federal funding without impacting our vulnerable client's well-being. She has a workable plan that will spare the most vulnerable from experiencing the worst pain. And so far, it's working. None of our recently arrived refugees or the 2,000 that have come since 2021, they haven't, we haven't gotten any eviction notices from them. We continue placing people in jobs. We're soldiering on with our free immigration services. We have a women's empowerment group. We do intensive case management, and we're work, and we work with the youth. But we cannot keep doing this much longer without additional help. I personally recently helped a family whose teenage son had to forego high school to get a job because his parents haven't been able to pay the rent. This is a newly arrived family. I'm currently working to get a lease renewal for a family of seven with no income because the father has undergone multiple kidney surgeries and cannot work by doctor's orders. He's only, that family arrived only four months ago. We did a check with some of our clients to see how they're doing, and one, I'll share one response from an Afghan refugee family who said of the current situation, "We came here to feel safe and start over, but this order," the executive orders, "but this order is making me feel like that's impossible." Our client, the point here is that our clients still need us, and they turn to us first in their times of need. So, we appreciate your consideration and willingness in the name of the Arlington residents, and we've always, who have always had a soft spot in their heart for people from around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elston.
Next, we have Carol Skelly, followed by, sorry, followed by-
Good evening, Ms. Kelly.
Emily Lansman.
Mr. Chairman and board members, Mr. Manager, I'm speaking in favor of additional capacity to provide day programs for adults with developmental disabilities. Adult day programs are a lifeline for individuals with developmental disabilities and their families. They provide engagement, socialization, training, and an opportunity to be part of the community. Most Arlington programs are run by nonprofits under contract to the county. While a significant portion of the operating cost is billable to Medicaid under the Developmental Disabilities or DD waiver, the agency partners need some county sponsorship, especially facilities and overhead, to offer services in high-cost Arlington. Four years ago, the county board directed the county staff to plan for sufficient capacity to meet growing demand. Since then, the county added the Employment Access Program at Sequoia to serve 15 individuals, and a Community Access Program based at the Woodmont Center to serve another 15 individuals. These programs have been welcome additions, and the Employment Access Program filled up almost immediately. The surface contract at Woodmont was amended in 2022 to provide for two more satellite locations, but the county has not yet identified the necessary physical space. It generally takes one to two years to bring a new program online, since once space has been secured, there are challenges of renovation, licensing, and placing applicants. The county budget shows expected increases of 17 individuals in DD day programs in each of fiscal years 2025 and 2026. The budget document further acknowledges that growth will soon exceed the planning targets established under the county board's direction four years ago, due to rising numbers of students with disabilities in APS and increases in state DD waivers. However, the budget is silent on whether or how this anticipated shortage will be addressed. My read is that the staff needs a renewed commitment from this board to continue the planning process. I understand that serious resource constraints are likely to result from changes in federal policy, especially Medicaid. If the worst-case scenario materializes, then many county programs, including support for DD, will have to be reevaluated. But to take this priority off the table now would virtually guarantee future capacity shortages. Without your leadership, it appears that future classes of Arlington Public School graduates who have disabilities may lack the supports they need to become active community members as adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Next speaker.
Next, we have Emily Lansman, followed by Aseem Rawood.
Good evening, Ms. Lansman.
Good evening. My name is Emily Lansman. I am a 21-year resident of Arlington County, and I am the current president of Arlington Friends of Urban Agriculture, a nonprofit volunteer organization that promotes urban agriculture and works to combat food insecurity in Arlington. I'd like to speak tonight regarding the elimination of $86,900 of county funding in the fiscal year 2026 budget for Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, which will impact its property at 4578 26th Street North, and its impact on FWA. FWA and NVCT have developed a partnership based on our shared interests of land stewardship and conservation. The development of the Turbork Terrace Garden, or TTG, at this protected property in early 2023 was a major win for FWA's Plot Against Hunger program and for food security in Arlington. The TTG would grow and contribute at least 1,000 more pounds of fresh produce each year for Plot Against Hunger. Please remember that FWA's Plot Against Hunger is unique in Arlington County. Its sole mission is to grow vegetables for Arlington residents in need. Arlingtonians volunteer to maintain plot gardens year-round, harvesting throughout the growing season, and delivering that harvest to county food pantries within hours. Each plot garden is located on someone's space, whether it's a school garden, a community garden, a faith-based garden, or a neighbor's yard, patio, or balcony. New spaces to garden this way are rarely available in Arlington, making the TTG an ideal benefit to all of the program stakeholders. A great garden team has been developing over the last two years, and we have several major workdays coming up in the next few weeks to compost and mulch the beds, build garden structures, and finally, plant our first vegetables in the ground. What's at stake if funding for this property is cut? Most importantly, the TTG will come to a halt without continued support for NVCT's staff time and other associated costs. This partnership with FWA still requires significant investment from NVCT to ensure its success and maintenance. FWA board members have contributed 300 hours of their own time to managing the garden's development, and volunteers have spent nearly 500 hours combined across multiple workdays at the site, removing invasive plants, rebuilding over 600 square feet of garden layout, and planting several seasons of cover crop to rebuild healthy soils. NVCT has already invested tens of thousands of dollars from their operating budget, as well as hundreds of volunteer hours into this project that would be a waste if it could not be completed. I urge you to consider the impact of cutting support for this protected land so desperately needed for its contribution to food security here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lansman.
All right. Slide-
We'll give you a 30-second heads-up.
Okay, sounds good. All right, since the last time I saw you all, Badar Khan Suri, an Arlington resident, was abducted by masked ICE agents for his association with his wife, a Palestinian. And predictably, we haven't heard a single word from any of you, even after we sent you all an open letter with the backing of more than two dozen local grassroots organizations. I'm here today, though, to comment on similar matters that Dr. Khan Suri was abducted for, divesting from genocide and apartheid. We'll start with a little bit of history. Arlington was the only locality in the DMV not to divest from apartheid South Africa. What do you think was said during those budget meetings to justify continuing to profit off of apartheid while everyone around us did the opposite? This is important context because everyone else in the DMV understood the importance of divestment, that you can't say you're against racism if you insist on binding us to racist apartheid regimes. Now, I couldn't help but realize that you chose to ignore one of my main points from the last board meeting, that you all have been telling us that Israel's genocide isn't a local issue. Instead of responding, you chose to try and dismiss these clear material ties by pointing out that the sample of emails I presented are dated, as if history started on October 7th, and if, as if Israel hasn't been doing genocide, apartheid, and ethnic cleansing for the past 76 years. Instead of responding, you chose to tell us that AED operates in an apolitical manner, making it seem like there's some rogue county agency with no oversight, ethics, or values. Genocide and apartheid are a local issue when my tax dollars are spent on Arlington County government officials traveling to Israel to court weapons manufacturers. Next slide. Genocide and apartheid are- Genocide and apartheid are a local issue when my tax dollars are spent on Arlington County government officials traveling to Israel to court weapons manufacturers. Next slide. Genocide and apartheid are a local issue when my tax dollars are spent on Arlington County government officials working with members of the Israeli government and their embassy. Next slide. Genocide and apartheid are a local issue when my tax dollars are spent on Arlington County government officials insisting to pay for venues to host Israeli weapons manufacturers. Next slide. We know ethics and values are factored in at some point in the process. Here in this email, we see a Viab official trying to bring another Israeli defense company to Arlington insisting it's, quote, "nothing that shoots." Why do you think he felt the need to say that? And as a side note, Viab, the Virginia Israel Advisory Board, is a Virginia state agency using my state tax dollars to work with Arlington County to bring all these merchants of death to our neighborhoods. Next slide. Genocide and apartheid are a local issue when my tax dollars are spent on Arlington County government officials who want to develop an Israeli innovation center in national landing. Take a look at the date, too. This is after history started, on October 7th. What do you think they'll innovate?
30 seconds.
Some of that battle-tested technology? Where do you think they test that technology? I understand you want to address the loss of federal jobs with ones in cybersecurity, aerospace, and defense, but let's be clear, these are not innovative jobs. We're talking about surveillance tower engineers, bomb designers, drone operators. How do we square these jobs with Arlington's morals, ethics, and values? If you care about human rights, equality, justice, dignity for all humans, then work with us to divest from these monsters. Our economic prosperity cannot be predicated on destroying humans abroad.
Just run out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabboud. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Courtney Massey, followed by Carlos Balasquez. Excuse me.
Hello. I'm here again to encourage you to more fully fund things like libraries, healthcare, affordable housing, after-school programs, arts programs, mental health support, youth support, and other essential community services named tonight, rather than devoting, what was it, $93 million and more to policing, surveillance, incarceration, and investments in companies complicit in genocide and ethnic cleansing in Palestine. People hear the phrase "defund the police," and they fear that doing so would mean instant descent into chaos and violence. The reality, however, is that the system of policing is far more violent than the world we envision. Modern-day policing traces its roots to slave patrols in the South and the quashing of labor or uprisings in the North. It has always existed to protect property, whether that be enslaved people or the boss's accumulated wealth. It is not designed to protect people and, in fact, brutalizes and terrorizes our black and brown neighbors at disproportionate rates, as we know happens here because Section 7 of the trust policy still allows Arlington police to collaborate with ICE. So we don't mean abandon community members or fail to hold people accountable for causing harm. What we mean is take the money from the police and reallocate it to resources that actually provide care for your community members and prevent harm. Several studies have shown that meeting community members' basic needs through food, housing, education, and healthcare reduces crime in the long run. So if your objective for public safety is to reduce crime, as outlined in the FY26 budget document, then you should be funding initiatives and programs that work to meet those basic needs. It is unconscionable that police are receiving a 9% salary increase when your libraries are facing a budget reduction and the elimination of multiple positions. If you believe in equity, then you'll reconsider this preferential treatment of law enforcement officials over other county employees who are integral to community safety. In reality, the safest communities don't have the most cops, they have the most resources. Think of the neighborhoods you would consider as safest in Arlington. How many cops do you see there? And what does the housing landscape look like? When people have the resources to live comfortably and not in fear of surveillance and criminalization, they are a lot safer. So we're asking you tonight to take that 5% budget increase for the police, heck, way more than that 5%, and move it to community resources that address the upstream problems facing vulnerable community members. Take money out of economic development funds that partner with companies supporting ethnic cleansing and genocide, and use those funds to invest in life in Arlington instead. Take money that would go to real estate developers and corporations, and funnel it toward housing initiatives that benefit working-class Arlingtonians. I've heard many people say, time and time again, that the budget is a moral document. You have a moral responsibility to all Arlington residents. So show us your true morals, and quite literally put your money where your mouth is.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
The next speaker is Carlos Palasquez, followed by Alice Hogan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, county staff, especially county staff who had to read my handwriting. It's Velasquez, not Alaskis. I kind of like being told back in Yale if I need to, but I won't. I'm actually going to tell a story that's going to age me, and some of you may get it. I remember when I was a child, one of my favorite commercials on TV was when an wise old owl was asked, "How many licks does it take to get to the middle of a Tootsie Pop?" Do you remember the answer? Three. One. Two. Crunch. And I tell that story not necessarily to point out the perils of a budget crunch, but instead to highlight the value of the arts. I have now a leadership position with Embracing Arlington Arts, an organization that advocates for the arts. The arts saves lives. And I say that because when I was in high school, my English teacher saw me give my very first public speech. And when I finished, she said to herself, "There's something special about Carlos." And she became my friend, mentor, and she was my teacher for four years, for English and public speaking. And I credit her for my success in being a professional communicator and an advocate for the arts. And I say the arts saves lives because I survived not only homelessness, but the HIV crisis and, dare I say, COVID. And as you know, the arts were impacted by COVID, and they're still surviving in a way that many are still struggling, for that matter. So the proposed budget cuts are going to impact a vehicle that can save lives, that can mitigate social isolation, as we know for older adults that is a health crisis and for people who have special needs. It's also an opportunity to create jobs in our county and impacts the hotel industry, the restaurant industry, because people want to engage in the arts locally and will come to this area as an arts destination. So there is an impact on cutting back on the arts. But I also think we need to revisit the model we're using now. It should not be an incubator model, it should be a model that sustains the arts programs as a way of teaching them sustainability. So there's an opportunity for the arts groups to share, for example, a grant writer. And I also think we should think about moving the grant program to the community foundation because they could teach us a lot about being able to leverage private dollars and the private donors as a way of being able to triple, quadruple the potential dollars that are available for the arts. Let me tell you that the center of that Tootsie Pop is sweet. What's not sweet is cutting back on the arts.
Thank you, Mr. Rabboud. Velasquez.
Our last speaker is Alice Hogan.
Good evening. I don't have a candy story for you. Thank you. I'm Alice Hogan. I'm a lifelong Arlingtonian. I'm proud to live in this community and listen to all the amazing speakers who are committed to making our home a better place and proud of a government that lifts up so many values and provides so many amazing services in our community. So good evening to the board, to our manager and staff. Thank you all. I am speaking tonight as a director of the Arlington branch of Navaha, the Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance. In these unprecedented times-- That statement is an understatement. And due to the federal disarray that we are watching, we see the economic, employment, immigration vulnerabilities probably like never before. In that context, and in our deficit of-- Budget deficit of $25 million, we want to thank the staff and the board for considering these increases in housing grant funding, permanent supportive housing funding, and supports for homeless and shelters, also for a new caseworker for housing grants as that program expands, and for your ongoing commitment to CAF inspections, which are so important. In a year of limited AHIF, we are definitely disappointed, and we understand that some of that money needs to go to the stabilization fund in these unpredictable times. And so we suggest that as that fund is not funded to the level we would like, we'd ask that we look at capacity within the county and anything we can do to strengthen our divisions to do the best work they can until we can see more AHIF money again. So that could include restoring the comprehensive planning position. We have so many planning and zoning demands on the same staff. We have to put things on the back burner. We have Langston Boulevard zoning reform, East Falls Church Metro, multifamily residential study, and the list goes on. And the staff just can't do it all. We also want to ask you about designating any remaining funds to the AHIF Affordable Housing Investment Fund as they may become available later in the year. I just want to mention that the AHIF is a remarkably impactful investment, as you all know, that we gain $14 of outside funds leveraged against every one Arlington dollar to that fund. Like, where else can you get that kind of an investment, a return on investment? And we know that we have a growing need for the housing for the very low-income folks in our neighborhoods, the unsheltered, our aging population. So we may not be able to depend on federal funds as we have before. So let's fortify what we can in our community and meet the needs of those we can as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Mr. Clerk, does this conclude the number of speakers? Is there anybody left?
There is no one else left, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. The way to conclude our budget hearing is with a motion to close-- And I will move that-- To close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget and to carry over to the April 9th-- Carryover action to the April 9th, 2025 county board meeting. Is there a second? Is seconded by Vice Chair De Feranti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank everyone who joined us to speak this evening. We have one departmental work session on the budget remaining. This will be this coming Thursday, March 27th, here at the Central Library Auditorium to discuss capital, funds, debt service, tax increment financing areas, and metro. Also, as we stated earlier, we will hold a public hearing this Thursday, so on the 27th, at 7:00 p.m. here in this auditorium, on the proposed tax rates, fee changes, and code amendments. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Good night. Thank you to you.
We have copies.